Good morning. This is our regularly scheduled Planning Commission Churchill County Commissioners Meeting. You could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting none, we'll move on to verification of the posting of the agenda, please.
Crystal Machado for the record. The agenda was posted on the 26th of November between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 at all locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Crystal. Then this will be a revised agenda, correct Pam?
Yes, number 14 should have been removed completely.
Can I get a motion for that agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as revised.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to 6A. Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November 7, 2024.
I move to approve the meeting minutes held on November 7, 2024.
I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to our first appointment. 7A. Consideration of Possible Action. Appointment of Matty Serna to the Library Board of Trustees to serve an unexpired term from January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2028.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie for the record, county manager. The assistant county manager and myself have interviewed candidates that have put in to be a member of the library board. And upon that review, we selected Matty Serna as our recommendation to the county board of commissioners to fulfill a four-year term that was vacated through resignation by Joe Pederidi. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, a motion, please.
I move to appoint Matty Serna to the Library Board of Trustees to serve an unexpired term from January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2028.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Matty. Swear now. Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Matty Serna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support.
That I support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the state of Nevada.
Of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear truth and faith.
Bear truth and faith.
Allegiance.
Allegiance.
And loyalty to the same.
And loyalty to the same.
To any ordinance.
To any ordinance.
Resolution or law.
Resolution or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of the office or position of.
Of the office or position of.
State your position.
Library Board of Directors? Trustees, Library Board of Trustees.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to 7B. Presentation by Jeremy Drew, Resource Concepts Incorporated of a Public Lands and Natural Resource Tracking List. Floor is all yours, Jeremy.
Thank you, Chairman. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. And because the calendar has turned to December, we have plenty of things to deal with year-end and administration end with the federal agencies. I'll go through quickly my tracking list and as always, stand for questions at the end. On the FRTC, we should get an update here in the coming weeks on where we stand with the modernization implementation. But I can tell you that the pending cadastral is still underway with BLM. In fact, we got a question on that this week with one of the conveyances that we proposed. Still a lot of focus on Dixie Valley and purchases of the remaining private property out there, as well as B-16 in terms of getting the grazing folks taken care of there and then the two roads. I'm sure in the coming meetings, you'll be talking more about Lone Tree. Sand Canyon and Red Mountain is still a little bit quiet. I appreciate the commission passing the resolution to make clear where we stand in terms of the design standards and maintenance requirements for that road. But we haven't really seen a lot of change out of BLM or Navy at this point, so we'll just stand by on that. State Route 361, we'll talk about a little bit in an upcoming item. But the design and NEPA for that is moving forward. The Gantt chart is there on the bottom of the sheet, so you can kind of see how things are planning to play out over the next coming fiscal years. And again, I would anticipate this being updated by the time I next meet with the commission. On DOI and BLM items, it'll be interesting to see what happens with the administration change. But if you'll recall, last time I was here, you all approved me to write a protest letter of the final programmatic EIS on solar energy development. What was nice about that is we carbon copied the governor's office and then NACO actually got us a meeting with the chief of staff. And your packet has a copy of the governor's consistency review letter. And what you'll find in there is there's a lot of comments and examples even out of Churchill County of things that we said in our letter. I think that will be very effective, especially with the administrative change. And hopefully, we see a little bit better outcome. I'm not sure how that's going to play out with the change in administration. If there'll be some sort of legal proceedings or if the new administration will pick up and completely redo that or basically scrap it and revert back to what was there in 2012. But it was certainly nice, not only to get our letter in, but then to have the support of the governor's office. So I wanted to flag that for you all. We'll talk a little bit on the next item about where we're at with the Greater Sage grouse Rangewide Plan. And then as far as energy transmission, the big item going on right there is NV Energy's proposed Green Link North project. And comments are coming up due on that, and we have that on an upcoming agenda item. So Chairman, those are the main items I had. The two biggies are probably coming up on additional agenda items. But as it stands now, I'm happy to answer any questions on the tracking list.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions or comments from border staff? Okay, we'll bump down to C, Jeremy, if you want. Consideration of Possible Action Approval to Prepare a Protest to the Bureau of Land Management's Final Environmental Impact Statement for Greater Sage grouse Rangewide Planning and Proposed Resource Management Plan Amendment. To you, Jeremy.
Yep. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. So this one was interesting. We had heard that the final proposed plan for sage grouse was going to come out in September. It got delayed until miraculously one week following the election. So I think it's pretty clear what's going on here in terms of this administration trying to get the plan done before their administration times out. I'm not sure how that's going to play out because like the solar PEIS, the governor's consistency review has 60 days. And that will run right up against, I think, January 15 or 14. As far as relates to Churchill County, really what we have the option to do at this point, now that the final has been presented, is that we can file a protest, as we did on the solar PEIS. The protest has to be consistent with our previous comments. So in your packet, you'll see the previous comment we provided to the draft EIS. If you'll recall, this is a really complex document, and that's coming from someone who's tracked this now through three iterations. What they did is they went from state-by-state planning areas to the entire range. And they're trying to make everything consistent, which is really hard to do for a bird that's that wide-ranging and how many different threats you get from state to state and how differently each state manages the bird. And so it is my recommendation today to protest, just because we don't know what's going to happen with the administration change. And I think it would be good to be on record in case some legal action gets taken. I know there's a handful of other counties that are looking to protest. And again, those protest points would have to be very consistent with our previous comments. On the slide deck that I provided, you'll see a couple of maps. One shows the 2015 habitat mapping and one shows the 2024 habitat mapping. Of note, there is new mapping in the Stillwater Range, which wasn't previously there. A lot of it is in the newly designated NCA, and so I don't think it would have a major effect on current land uses. But it is worth noting, and it is worth noting, that there's a little bit of habitat that pulls down closer to Sand Mountain. If you'll recall, we've been cooperating agency on this. This map looked a lot worse in previous iterations. So for as crazy as this process has been, I think the map ended up probably a lot better than it could have because of our active cooperation in the cooperating agency status. On the next slide, you kind of see, you know, how that map translates into BLM language on various allocations for different land uses. In my initial review of the document, it looks like their allocation table got a little bit closer to what the counties wanted than what BLM had initially proposed. One area that I think particularly rings true to that is renewable energy. They were trying to kind of lighten restrictions for renewable energy in sage grouse habitat. And I think they've backed off of that. The thing that I haven't found is we really were pushing as a group of Nevada counties for making sure that any land allocation was based on ground truthing of data. Because those maps are modeled, and that essentially means they're wrong, and everyone knows it, we need to actually go out and make sure on the ground that the map reflects what's really going on there. And so, again, that's something that I'll be analyzing, but it's probably something that we will flag in the protest because it does open up the potential for negotiating to make sure that language is stronger if we need it. And then the last slide just would be kind of what I would see as the main themes of our protest. Again, concerns with the scope of the planning area, the fact that it's range-wide and you're getting a signature out of Washington DC versus the state director signing the plan. The plan's so complex, it's almost impossible to find. If you want to see what's going on and what's being proposed in Nevada, you've got to look in about three different places, two of which are appendices. And quite frankly, I don't think that's a good way to convey what they're trying to do to the public. The mapping, while it did get better, there was a significant change between the draft and final EIS. This is something that caught them up in 2015, and I think it's going to be a problem again. It's a procedural thing that they don't seem to want to acknowledge, but I think we should flag that. There's so many alternatives. There's five different alternatives. It makes a complex document even more so. allocations, as I mentioned, we're still analyzing that, but we will for sure flag that all allocations decisions need to be based on ground truth mapping. And then the two areas that are for sure inconsistent with the state plan are the way they implement adaptive management. So if populations start to decline, a lot of times they start shutting down various allocations. It's not consistent with how we do that in the state plan. The state plan is a much more collaborative process. This plan is a much more BLM-driven process. And then the BLM is proposing disturbance caps, which is not something that's explicitly supported in the state plan. So Chairman, I know that's a lot of information to throw at you. What I'm looking for at this point is whether or not the commission wants to move forward with the protest. Again, my recommendation is that we do. Again, I know a new administration's coming in and this thing is going to be in flux. But I think keeping a foot in the door and a foot in the process is always a wise move.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion, please.
I move to authorize the county manager, in coordination with RCI, to develop and send a formal protest to the Bureau of Land Management's Final Environmental Impact Statement for Greater Sage grouse Rangewide Planning and Proposed Resource Management Plan Amendment.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to 7D. Consideration of Possible Action Approval to Prepare a Comment Letter to the Bureau of Land Management Draft Environmental Impact Statement for the Green Lake North 500 KV Transmission Line. Jeremy?
So Chairman, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with RCI. In your packet for support material, what we have is the March 28 scoping comment that we provided to BLM, since I didn't have time to put together a draft letter for the EIS. The one thing I would flag in here is that we made a recommendation for the BLM and NV Energy to meet with us and talk through the alignment of the proposed corridor. And if you'll recall, when we issued that scoping letter, they were proposing a three-mile-wide corridor, which is pretty significant. Since that time in the draft, they have pared that down to a 3,500-foot right away. There's two different sets of maps in your support material. One is what NV Energy had proposed, and one is the new BLM preferred alternative. I'm very comfortable with the BLM preferred alternative, and this came out of that workshop that we requested, not only with us, but with other affected counties, Lander, Eureka, and White Pine. But as you'll see on this map, the original proposal followed the 239 KV lines right through the middle of those RMPP parcels that we got in the lands bill or that were identified for disposal and immediately over the existing Fallon landfill. And then the corridor occupied the entire landfill expansion parcel. And so certainly that was of concern. We had initially suggested that they go north of those RMPP parcels, and what they decided to do is go south. So what you'll see, if I can get this to work since I've got it. There you go. Is that the pink hatched area is the proposed area to go to the county in exchange. And then the purple highlight is the new utility corridor. So again, it avoids all of that area. For the most part, it avoids the city of Fallon dump, and I've made sure that they're aware of this. And it completely avoids their expansion area to the south. If we slide down to the next sheet, we still are in alignment across Dixie Valley with what was approved in the NDAA. And then one more sheet down, there's one additional, one more, sorry about that. There's one additional alternative that they brought in. If you'll recall, the north end of the Desatoyas was released from Wilderness Study Area, and they immediately put the line right up against the wilderness area, which is problematic in my mind from a fire management standpoint. And so we were able to convince them to stay a little bit north of the Wilderness Study Area, miss that spur of the Desatoyas, which has some natural resource issues with both Golden Eagle and Desert Big Horn sheep. And it also still misses our RMPP parcel there. So what I would suggest in our letter is that we flag our support and appreciation for the BLM preferred alternative. And then, of course, we'll go through and identify any specific evaluation issues that we see. Make sure things like wildfire and noxious weeds are taken care of. So my recommendation again today is to provide a comment letter. I'll work with the county manager on putting that together before the deadline, which I believe is December 14. But the main theme will be that we support the BLM preferred alternative and the changes that have been made since the scoping came out.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to authorize the county manager, in coordination with RCI, to develop and send a comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management's Draft Environmental Impact Statement for the Green Lake North 500 KV Transmission Project.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to 7E. Consideration of Possible Action Approval to Prepare a Comment to the State of Nevada, State of Nevada Department of Transportation Regarding the Realignment of Route 361 to the Gabs Highway. Jeremy?
Okay, so Chairman, in your support material, we had the announcement for the public meeting that was held in Gabs yesterday evening. There is also an online option that you can view anytime. And then the second piece of support material is the presentation that was provided at the meeting. And if we slide down to the maps, that's probably the best one to speak from. Uh, next one. That one may be your best bet. So if you'll recall, the very first time this came out, NDOT actually had that stair-step map from the Navy that they issued along with their Record of Decision. And if you'll remember right, the NDAA actually authorized the withdrawal to the curved weapons danger zone line. And there's a pretty significant difference when you start looking at the alignment on the Gabs Highway. So we flagged that for NDOT, and they reran their initial alignment study. And you'll see that a lot of those alignments on the map on the right started to push right up against the weapons danger zone. The topography there is a little bit better. You get out of mineral claims and you get out of some biological resource issues. And so I think what NDOT's looking for at this point is some feedback on the proposed alignments. They're calling out two potential alignments, one being the western and one being the eastern. I think we can put together a very simple comment letter that simply says Churchill County supports staying as close to that weapons danger zone line as possible and then making sure that we have tie-ins with any existing county roads, including the portion of State Route 361 that's going to be basically decommissioned. It'll still be in the Navy withdrawal, but because that's more safety zone than bombing area, I think keeping that active and access to it will be key either once the withdrawal expires or for controlled access type issues. And so again, this one would be very simple. I'll work with county manager Barbie on it. But simply flagging our support for the western alignment, staying close to that weapons danger zone and making sure any tie-ins with county roads are maintained. Happy to answer any questions, Chairman.
Any questions or comments for Jeremy?
Jeremy, most of this is in Nye County, right? This isn't in Churchill with the realignment?
Yeah, I think.
Because it doesn't go up to Mittelgate at all, does it? It's further south?
Commissioner, great question. Jeremy Drew, for the record. There is, I think it's about a 13-mile realignment, if memory serves me right, and probably the northern third is in Churchill. It doesn't come all the way to Mittelgate in the turn there. But it is, there is a portion, like I said, five to maybe five to seven miles that would be in that southern portion of Churchill County. You bet.
Any other questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to authorize the county manager, in coordination with RCI, to develop and send a comment to the Nevada Department of Transportation regarding the State Route 361 realignment project.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for your time, Jeremy.
Before, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
You as well. Moving on to 7F. Consideration of Possible Action Ratification of Agreement Between the State and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health and Behavioral Health, and Churchill County Social Services in the amount of $8,192 to provide laboratory subject matters experts to participate in statewide surveillance and strategic planning specific to wastewater. Shannon?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So as part of our lab structure, we apply for several grants to bring on new platforms and expand our services. One of them that we did apply for was to do the wastewater testing. When we put in this proposal, it was really found by the state that no one across the state had ever implemented one, and they would rather do a study and work together to build a program than then could be implemented in all labs. So they're providing us the $8,192 to participate in that process. And then we could go back to a competitive grant in the next year to actually implement the program here. So I'm asking for this ratification so we could participate.
Any questions or comments for Shannon? Is there any public comment?
Shannon? Is this for the well water or is this?
Wastewater.
Just wastewater.
This is just wastewater.
Okay.
And one thing is tracking of infectious diseases, things of that sort. It's something that they started during the pandemic, as you know. Dr. Pandory was trying to get this launched from the Nevada State Public Health Law, and it just never got traction. And so that's why they're putting this out, because this is something positive in the future.
Any other questions? Any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to approve ratification as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of Possible Action Ratification of Agreement Between State and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Service Division, and Churchill County Social Services in the amount of $87,267 to provide congregate meal services and individuals deemed eligible per the ADSD service specs. Shannon?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Again, Shannon Ernst, for the record. Really, this is bringing forward our life center programming so we can continue to provide that congregate meals in the dining room. As you know, we're serving about 150 people a day in the dining room, and it gives a place for the socialization. So if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments for Shannon? A motion, please.
I move to accept and ratify the agreement as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I skipped one, didn't I?
Yeah, I, sorry. I'm like, wait a minute, this is confusing.
7G. Consideration of Possible Action Ratification of Agreement Between State and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability. Okay, it's the same thing here, okay. Aging and Disabilities Division and Churchill County Social Services in the amount of $220,491 for the fiscal year 2025, funding to provide home-delivered meal services to individuals deemed eligible per the ADSD service specification. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So annually, we do put in a competitive grant so that we can support our meal delivery program. We're serving about 3,800 meals per month to homebound seniors here in the community. And when we look at this number, as you know, we have a five-mile radius that is approved by ADSD. And the next one that you're going to actually look at approving is for our expanded program. So that we're now serving, we're going all the way out to Cold Springs if necessary for this homebound. So it's just very exciting that we did receive the fully funded amount for this so we can maintain that program. Something just exciting for our homebound this year, we were able to maintain the Pay It Forward program for Christmas. So we really survey our homebound and where are they having issues paying essential services like utilities, rents. And so we received donations of $10,500 to do that program again this month. So I'll be sending you invitations if you'd like to attend as we award those during our senior city lunch on the 16th. So we asked for approval today so we can maintain.
Any questions or comments for Shannon? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion, please.
I move to accept and ratify the agreement as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Back on track here, move to Appointment I. Consideration of Possible Action Ratification of Agreement Between Nevada Clinical Services Incorporated and Churchill County Social Services in the amount of $115,000 to provide community wraparound services to disabled residents of Churchill County. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So this is that expansion program. It really was a pilot to see what gaps we could fill through this fund for healthy Nevada dollars. It is building the transportation, one, so carts at times cannot take people to their doctor's appointments in Reno. And so we were able to implement that gap transportation program. We're providing about five people a week, medical appointments in county and out of county. We make sure it is the last option of resort. We're looking to RSVP. We're looking to cart to make sure there's no other options. And then we're providing 34 home-delivered meals each week, also to support that outer radius outside that five miles. In 2021, when we took over the operations of the Life Center, there was some being served outside, but it went against the specifications approved by ADSD. So this was really an attempt to serve those that are still in need. They're just not in that five mile. So we're asking for this ratification today to maintain the program.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to approve and ratify the agreement as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Item J. Consideration of Possible Action Approval of the Churchill County Administrative Policies and Procedures. Policy 001. Implementing Purchase Procedures for Churchill County Departments and Elected Officials. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford, for the record. As you know, the Churchill County Board of County Commissioners is the body through which expenditures of funds are controlled all throughout the county. Individual departments and elected officials have very limited authority to expend funds without permission from the board. This policy is designed to affirm the significance of the budget process and provide specific authorization and signature authorities for departments operating within it. This policy is designed to provide definitive procedures for purchases that are not within a budget line item, made in response to emergency situations, or would result in an overage of the budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments for Joe? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to approve the Churchill County Administrative Policies and Procedures. Policy 001 as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you want to pull any of the letters received, Justin?
No, I don't.
Okay. A motion for the consent items?
I move to approve the consent items.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Anything anyone wants to consider for a future agenda item? Okay, we'll move on to commissioner and management staff reports. What do you have, Justin?
I have nothing to pass.
I have nothing as well. Sherry? Joe?
Nothing, thanks.
Jim?
Just a reminder that next week, Friday, I believe, we have the employee appreciation dinner, so we hope to see everyone there. And immediately following this, again, as a reminder, we have the budget to respond.
Thank you, Jim. Linda?
I've got my staff working on the delinquent management property tax cases right now, and we're going to be sending out 1,000 delinquent letters. And we'll hopefully get them out this month. If not, we'll get them out next month.
Okay, Pam? Crystal? Okay. Okay. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay, 14 was removed. We stand adjourned, and then we have the department tours right after this. Thank you, everyone.